Good evening, welcome to the November 1st Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I ask that you please will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as for all.
All right. Again, you are on the November 1st Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. There are no minutes to accept tonight, we're gonna make a quick adjustment to the agenda. We're gonna go with BM Associates, 14 Apple Hill, review and discuss documents submitted for Ridge Preservation Review fulfill grading and clearing of a single residential lot said property is located 14 Apple Hill Drive in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 204 Block 2 Lot 8. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Joel Mann, behalf of the applicant.
Greg Leahy, Tectonic Engineering.
If you'd just refresh us real quick about the project, please.
So, basically, the... Where we started, when I came, became a officer, the owner of the property started to clear some property in the back and was stopped by the building inspector, wasn't under the impression that there is any permit needed. So then I got a, there was, I got a phone call from this, from the owner, went down together with the building department and the extent, the grading what he did was required to go to the planning board approval under the section of the village zoning. So we, basically, we did an as-built of the grading and adjusted a little bit to stabilize it. Then, on the right side of the property, we added some small retaining walls, also basically to stabilize their, an existing steep slope that was created while he was grading. We're not aware, I have no count, so one of the main questions I see in the new comment letter was about surveying the trees. We have no records on how much trees was taken down, it doesn't seem to be a lot, so what we did is we proposed some landscaping to mitigate that and and basically that's what we have here and we hope that, I believe that the last comments are very, I don't know if you wanna go over first. We actually have, most of it is noted and we can accept that and the main thing is the trees and then we actually just today revised the plans, but probably you don't have it, we have it here, but we revised the plans to make some small changes. So we'll appreciate if the, hopefully if the board are ready to go for a conditional approval on that so we can close this up.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? No? Natalie?
Sure, so this is the applicant's second appearance, they were last before you in June. At that time, you typed the action unlisted and declared your intent to be lead agency. We'll defer to Kelly on the next steps under Seeker. I think to Mr. Mann's point, the clearing limit and clearing that has been done or to be done is really like the big outstanding issue for us or in our memo that we've noted. So, as part of the original subdivision approval, there is a clearing line or restriction essentially on the property. We've asked for the applicant to add that to their plan so that you can see where that is in relation to, I guess, what's been done to date. I'm not sure if there's any additional clearing that's required or if what, it's, so it is what it is at this point.
Yeah, correct.
So I think you would still wanna see though that clearing limit line for the original subdivision on the map. And then essentially you may wanna ask the applicant to show the limit that was cleared to date and just see whether or not it complies or not. And then that way you can kinda consider that supplemental vegetation requirement of your Ridge Preservation Code that you have the authority to implement on the applicant. There are some shrubs that are currently proposed along where the retaining wall is constructed on the property. We had some minor comments about the species and how many of each were being provided. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the applicant did submit materials for you to consider the visibility from the view corridor. So when you, you should consider those materials that were submitted and make a finding. And then we had some minor comments on just the legends and meets and bounds description on the plot. And ultimately, other than that, we just defer to counsel on public hearing requirements and I'm not sure if this was referred for GML or not, but that's all I have.
Thank you, questions for Natalie? Kelly?
Sure, so I provided board a draft part SEAF, part two and as per my normal practice, the little arrows on the right indicate when there is a small impact rather than a no impact and there were three and I'll just review those. The first is, will the proposed action result in a change in the intensity of the use of land? But what the DEC regulations say there is if the change in land use is consistent in size with the surrounding development patterns, it doesn't introduce a new land use, create a new need for transportation, water, water infrastructure, et cetera, there may only be a small impact. Obviously, they're just changing the topography there, so that's a change in land, I guess, in the intensity of land based by the DEC. The next one was number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, flora and fauna? That's because the project removed some flora and fauna. And then the last one is, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or damage problems? But here, there is less than one acre of disturbance and it does not require SWIP. So you can consider the SEAF part two and whether you'd like to make a determination of significance. And just to touch on the other two issues, this was referred under GML. It's not require, it wasn't required under the new agreement with the county, but it was very close to the rez so I asked the building department to refer it anyway and it was returned as a local determination. And then a public hearing is in your discretion.
Thank you. We'll do the EA F part two first. Is the board satisfied based on the document page you provided that we can declare a negative declaration?
Yep.
Alright, so I'll offer a motion to accept, to make a neg, dec.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We still got a, on Ridge Pres, right, that's still one of the outstanding, if it's viewable.
Right.
They did submit a packet, Tectonic did, for us to review. I've also, I personally gone through the neighborhood and look, I don't think you can see any of the work that's...
You can't see it from Rich?
No.
Then I'm good.
So, I don't know, Rich, have you gotten a chance to look?
I'm okay.
You're okay with it, okay.
Yep.
Alright, so I will offer a motion that Ridge Preservation, to waive the requirements of Ridge Preservation. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so really the outstanding is just to see if any of the clearing that was done encroached on that buffer, that buffer space.
How much clearing was done prior, was it prior to the application meeting?
Yeah, they did the work, or they started to do the work, the building department went out. So I don't know, is the work completely done at this point or?
There's some stabilization needed and like the main thing, on the right side, we are, there is a very steep slope and we're going to support it with three small walls there that was proposed.
So when we talk about, that was, that's this piece right here, it's just over six square feet.
Sorry.
Okay, so you're just gonna put a retaining wall in just to hold back the earth that's already there and you're not gonna put any more, or you're gonna bring fill into? Because you said you gotta, you're gonna put a wall to support.
The wall's on the right side.
The right side, sorry.
Here, it's basically stable, we're just going to fine tune the grade and, and, and put hay and seed and stabilize it.
So how many trees have been taken down so far?
Not everything, so it's basically, it was a little bit of grading and then between the trees. I tell you the truth, I was trying to go back and try to find it out and I couldn't. So it's still, there's still three there, so it's not like it was just cleared, Scott.
You said you were up at the property, a lot of clearing done.
It's, can't tell.
If you can't tell, then...
I just...
Ask for give me some permission.
Yeah, I just, the only thing I, the only thing I, and the only thing I'm concerned about is if we went into the buffer. That's the only, that's my only outstanding question, if you went into the buffer, other than that. Because if you went into the buffer, then you have to put trees back.
Okay, so it's basically six square feet, so.
So what do you think we should, um...
So the next step is to determine whether you think a public hearing is necessary.
Yeah.
But, I don't...
I don't either. Rich? So I'll make a motion to waive the public hearing on this application as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So really with that, that's the last piece is...
That's the last piece, so I would say if you want some plantings done in that six square feet, you can ask for that and that could be a condition...
A condition of approval, right?
Of a resolution, yes.
Can you make that happen? I don't think it's a big ask.
We can add another shrub, so basically I believe we have nine now.
That has a shrub, yeah.
I think it's nine on the plan, we'll have number 10 and we'll put it in that area.
And everybody's happy?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll offer a motion to have counsel draft a resolution of approval with what we just spoke about and incorporating in Natalie's recommendations from her memo as well. Second, any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Thank you.
Alright, back to our regular scheduling program. CVPM ARB signage, review and discuss documents submitted for proposed signage on a commercial residential building located at 250-260 Route 32 in Central Valley. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 230 Block 7 Lot 17 dot 2. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. My name is Paul Baum, I'm an attorney with Sirajin and Baum, BLLC. We represent the applicant, they have Jerry Cassessa here, the owner's representative. So we're here to talk about the signage for this structure, I think you're all familiar with this building at 250-260. When this project was approved in 2018 and the board approved the general elevations and floor plans, the sign panel here was just a generic black panel with, I guess, some white lettering which was, you know, supposed to show a symbolic sign. The applicants have now come in and as the space got leased out, the tenants, you know, have, have their own ideas of what their signs want for their businesses. But apparently the building inspector was looking at that elevation that was approved in 2018 and re-approved in 2020 and wouldn't allow any deviations from that sign. So we're here to get this board's blessing and approval to allow these tenants to deviate from that elevations that were approved in 2020, to allow them to put in individual signs for their businesses. All these signs are compliance with the current sign code. They're actually smaller than what the board had approved back in 2018. At that time, the signs were going to be two by 12 feet, they're actually now two by eight feet. So the signs have been reduced, it's very similar to other developments, other stores, other strip malls. As you drive up 32, you can see every store has their own individual sign, there is no uniformity of signs on any individual storefront. So we're asking that the boards, I guess sitting as the ARB, allow the deviation from what was approved in 2018 and allow these tenants to install these signs on the building.
Questions for the applicant? Natalie?
Sure, so I think the background of the application was well described already. We had questions about the applicant's intent, whether or not this was, you know, for the six storefronts or just the one Acosta signs, which like a close-up detail was provided in the plans. Okay. Four, because there's two tenant spaces vacant, correct, yep. So ultimately, I guess I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, I think in the past you've reviewed these strip malls with either two considerations, one, you've required like the same colors to be used on each storefront, similar sizes for each sign above each tenant's space. But then also the board has considered other mini malls or strip malls and allowed deviation among the tenants. So I think it's to the board's discretion now to discuss how you wanna proceed with this application and ultimately memorialize that in your action. With respect to compliance with the code, we agree that the size of the signs is complying with what's permitted. We had questions about whether or not the signs would be illuminated, projection from the face of the wall. And then again, confirmation that each sign would be 16 square feet, which would provide some consistency above each storefront. You know, and if that's something that the board would like to see, again, you can memorialize that in your action. The code permits two typefaces per sign, up to four colors per sign. It would be helpful to have the rendering that the applicant just is showing you now as part of their plan package so that you can see the details of each sign that's proposed. I don't think that was provided in our package previously. But ultimately, I think it complies. And then otherwise, just for the board to consider the code definition or requirements for you to consider these indicates that signs should be compatible with their surroundings, accentuate the architectural features of each building and be appropriate with orderly layouts. So the board should consider that during the review of this application.
Questions for Natalie? So you're actually, you're missing a sign, it is pro interiors, so five out of the six spaces are occupied.
And actually, yeah, so this is not the actual sign that we're trying to do to show you the dome tents we have, PWI, I have no idea what this sign looks like, I think it's just initials, a white banner.
Oh, they've got the whole window filled up with... They got the window filled up with four typefaces, three different fonts, a bunch of different sizes.
So they're gonna have to, what I want to be able to have is every applicant, every tenant, they'll go to the building inspector with their own individual sign and make sure it meets the codes. It's no more than two by eight in size, no more than two typefaces and no more than four covers. I'm going to restrict them to two foot by eight foot. And to answer Natalie's question regarding the type of sign illumination, there are blue snakes that are on the building, so it's an indirect light, it will not be changed, it will not be internally lit. Projection design is about six inches at max. What I do is wanna make sure that when we attach the sign, there's not a large enough ledge that birds nest, birds can nest on it or it's big enough space behind it, where bees will have to conve, their homes behind it. So I would say four to six inches, but once we get an actual sign, what I want to be able to do is have the tenants provide a sign, I will do the initial review and say, okay, as the landlord, property manager, we accept it, they can go to the town for the application, go to the... And the same thing down the road is that exchange hands, you know, Acosta may not be there after his five-year lease is up, so somebody else can then take that sign down, go through this regular process of the new apartments, apply for a signature for a sign, and as long as it meets the code requirements, the, you know, no more than 20 square feet in this case, we will allow you to limit us to 16 square feet, if we think that looks best to the property.
So future applicant, future tenants will not be able to increase the signs?
No, they can come back.
Well, we could, but I'm not, we're not the property manager, so I want to go over...
Yeah, you want to go over beautiful.
But, you know, and also with the same in the, in the zoning or the regulations, the two typefaces is exclusive of logos. Okay, so if Horizon comes in and wants to add swoop on it, you know, that's, yeah, there's something like the option to do that. I think the ice cream stall has a cone, so I don't know, you know, what that cone has their logo.
That's their logo.
How many colors is it? I may have to change it to four colors, but I think I have to because it allows the exclusion of logos. So I just wanna have the ability to meet the code requirements and give each tenant the opportunity to put one of those signs.
I think that ruined the building, but that's my two cents. Why?
For allowing logos and...
Well, but... What do you think, Rich?
Well, they stay within the code, I mean, they're not going outside the code, right? They just wanna change the zone, the whole design. They stay with the colors, the fonts.
Yeah, I agree, just staying with the code requirement and it's fine.
Okay. So with this one, let's... Alright, I lost my page for a second.
Even though there's, I guess this is a question for Kelly, even though their signs are smaller than what's allowed, can it be written in, that they all need to stay the same size?
It would be, it's a modification to the site plan.
Yeah, so that's a modification to the site plan and it would be a condition the applicant has said that they're willing to comply with. If somebody wants to come in to increase that, which is still within the code, they would have to come back.
Okay.
Right, so it's just...
Yep.
Yeah, we have no objection with putting a condition on that the maximum size is two by eight and if they deviate from that, they need to come to your board for any further approvals.
So at this point, Jerry, then you're looking just for the generic two by eight and then you're gonna tell every applicant they have to come and get their own ARB approval? Or so, or...
Right, and, you know, actually now with this language, I'm actually, you are considering putting 3.881, whatever it is, because they have many colors, exclusive logos, and now that they sign with these, they know they're allowed to have two by eight sign. And that sign needs to come to us for approval, just like a build out of the store, if we're gonna be at four of them and have to make sure that it's acceptable, we can't walk off the door. And then it goes to the building for their review, but the first step is to go to us and go through it, so.
And all the window signage is gonna stay then too?
Yeah, the window signage right now unless they exceed the 20 square foot. The, there's a provision in the code that you're allowed, but the window signage, you know, in a window store, it cannot have an HD zone, it's able to, it's 311, it's 310, and it's 11. An HD zone, you go 20% of the store, of the natural store, but the last one would, uh, total, with the elevation. They, they don't exceed that, so I would have no reason to ask these tenants not to be able to put those details in when they provide a code, so that I was a lead, but actually, the, the window signage is one of the only ones that's a, that a building is not required. So it's not even a building's right as per, unless it's 20 square feet, and obviously it's a real approach.
Color and font sizes don't mean anything with the window signs, though.
It could be, make sure they're the guidelines of ways, if they don't regulate, it's just, you can say, maybe 20% rather, so as long as they don't exceed that, then, you know, we might have the reasons to have the licenses, so if we made that.
Definitely, one of these storefronts.
Alright, public hearing? No, 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 no? Alright, so I'll offer a motion to waive the public hearing? All in favor? Aye. I will then offer a motion for counsel to draft a resolution of approval.
Type two?
No! Fine.
Okay.
I'll type, I'll make a motion to type this under type two item under SECR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have, can I make the other motion now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll offer a motion to have counsel draft a resolution of approval with the details that we spoke about tonight.
I will second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll be in a.
And just so the board knows, there was, I mentioned to you earlier that there was a typo. So this actually is not subject to GML under the village's agreement with the county. So previously I said this was required to be referred, but under that agreement, it specifically exempts signage applications that are code compliant.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
See you later.
Woodbury Highlands Holdings, HLE review and discuss proposed amended subdivision site plan for relocation of two lots within the subdivision known as Highland League Estates. Said property is known of, on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 245 Block 1 Lot 90, 146 and 179. I guess they didn't show up.
Oh, Joseph.
Oh, okay, hi.
Oh, and I was all excited to give a lead-in, take it away.
What's up?
I said, oh, and I was all excited to give a lead-in.
Yeah.
No, go ahead, lead in.
So...
I don't wanna steal it from Chris.
What you're looking to do was filed and approved by the county in 2006. So unless you're looking to make those drainage changes?
No, 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 that, that actually, I apologize, that was an error, we sent in some maps, the text was there for the proposed pipe, but the pipe, pipe itself was frozen, so there's nothing to change, nothing that is changing.
Bye.
Great job.
Next item on the agenda, Highland, Highland Mills Cent Group, Center Group. Review documents submitted for subdivision site plan special permit and ARB for proposed 84-unit senior housing project located on the east side of Route 32 near the intersection of Ford Avenue in Highland Mills. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 218 Block 2 Lot 7, 9, 10, 11 and 13.
Good evening, George Lithgow, attorney for the project. With me is Joe Fow from Peter Zach and Fow. He's got the important part, which is responding to various comments that we've gotten from your consultants. We were hoping to go to a straightforward discussion about authorizing your attorney to adopt a negative declaration. We were on that course until about 1:30. I understand you have received a memo from the village's hydrologist.
Yep.
And we have actually responded to that shortly afterwards. You're intending to provide that to your consultants today and then discuss it with them and see if it resolves your concerns. So now we have one hydro, hydrogeologist talking to another hydrogeologist. As you, your consultants have known in the past, you should have the appropriate professionals, you should certify what the deal is and we expect that will happen in hopefully short order. So what we would like to discuss after Joe discusses the seeker comments is whether you would consider authorizing your attorney to proceed with a negative declaration, recognizing that issue must be addressed to the satisfaction of the village. One reason we're hoping to do that is found out today, the village board only has one meeting remaining in December. The negative declaration would allow them to consider setting a public hearing and taking action in December, hopefully. And we would like to try to accomplish that because this has been through at least three mayors so far. We understand there's a little uncertainty about the next election and we'd like to do what we could to make this happen under this mayor, he's been very supportive. So without further ado and further comments, I will turn it over to Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not quite sure how much detail you wanna go through this evening, I, I've gone through your comments. They're very straightforward, in my opinion, and all very addressable. I don't know if you really wanna go through mine to mine, but I'll leave that up to the board. I mean, I can present that, we can respond to all of them. The, the main issue was, in my opinion, was the recharge, which we, as George had mentioned, hired a hydrogeologist, is prepared to report, is, you know, that really is the issue that's out of my realm, but that seemed to be the largest issue, everything else, we can absolutely take care of in short order, you know, in the next couple of days. So I'll leave it up to the board or the consultants on how detailed. So, uh, I'll leave it up to the board or the consultants on how detailed, if any, you wanna go through any of these comments.
Go ahead.
No.
Okay.
Just the high level.
Sure. Yeah, um, really high level, because I agree. I think that, um, in the applicant's next submission, they can respond to a lot of our comments and resolve them, um, really quick. I think one of the issues that we're still waiting on an answer for is the access to community water. There is a lot that is split by the consolidated water area boundary, understanding that that lot is, you know, going to be subdivided and essentially put one half to the senior housing parcel and then the other half to an existing lot that is served by community water. Uh, we just wanna understand what mechanism that that is resolved by. Um, also the wetlands, we're looking for the map that the Army Corps of Engineers, um, basically approved as part of their jurisdictional determination. That should be provided.
Which we have.
Okay. And then there were some question on the easement areas, so I think as long as that's just clarified on the next submission, you know, we'll be good with that. I won't go into the wa- water quality protection overlay and riparian zone, understanding that new materials were submitted today. That may resolve some of those questions. But I do think, um, you know, if the board would consider authorizing that consultant-to-consultant conversation, that would help advance this question and issue and get to an answer. It is a layered issue, you know, one is, does the riparian zone extend to the wetlands? And then two, if it does, how does that impact the net lot area calculations as that being potentially land that should be left undisturbed? So that's all I'll say on that. With respect to the subdivision that's proposed, they are creating the senior housing lot and then lot two, which is sort of like a remainder lot. Uh, we had been asking for net lot area calculations to demonstrate that that lot was buildable under the code. At this point, it meets all of the code requirements for remaining lot area. There is, you know, setbacks where you could put a home essentially or some other structure. Although to construct that lot, you would have to disturb some wetlands to get access to that area of the lot. So again, I think for the purposes of, um, it being buildable, they've done what they need to for, for the code purposes, but just so the board understands that that lot does have some constraints. And then with respect to the seeker, they have submitted the expanded part three narrative. We had several comments, just clarifying items or, um, you know, asking for some additional information to support their findings and for you to consider as far as mitigation measures, and we'll look forward to the applicant's response on those.
Questions for Natalie?
I have just one quick question. With regards to the water district, uh, the lot, I probably didn't show the existing lot lines because it's gonna be proposed to be deter- deleted, but the lot that is out of the water district, which is south, I guess southeast, that is not being proposed to be developed at all. That's mostly contains the wetlands and the plugged-in area. So I don't know if that helps or as far as the determination, but the whole, all the area where the development is are within the tax lots that are within the current water district.
Yeah, I think what we're just looking for is, I know that you had obviously ample conversations with the village board about the sewer boundary and how this parcel would have sewer access to the central sewers essentially, or access to the central sewers. I don't know if that discussion was raised with the village board about the consolidated water area boundary, and I know that we had presented that in our memo.
It wasn't discussed because the message supervisor showed all those parcels in the border that we all paid more tax.
Well, I think that what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna have to take a look at the map that Natalie provided, and if this area truly isn't being developed, it's gonna end up being handled by a condition. You know, it can only get water under certain circumstances, and that may be a separate agreement with the village if and when that portion of the parcel gets developed. I will resolve that for you by the next time. I'm gonna just make a note.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Natalie?
Dr. Phil's assistant. Totally forgot your name tonight, I'm sorry.
Rich Dandrea.
There you go.
Yeah, so we just had, we had two comments. One was, uh, the previous version of the E A F July, kind of rest of two. The applicant was developing a concept, install sidewalk on the east side of Route thirty-two, the project, it enters beforehand. That seems to be a bit as familiar as the E A F, I'm not sure if there's a reason for that.
The part three?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. So that, that we can see that in the, in the current version of the E A F.
Still, we find that so, it's pretty certain.
Yeah, that's an add-on, I think that's for, that's why it was. And then the other option, the other item was, back in May of twenty twenty-two, we had written a letter, um, specific, or part of our review was specific to part utilization for the study, I mean, for the project. We were requesting that a part analysis be completed prior to completion of construction phase two of the project, make sure that the utilization is working out, and maybe we're splitting the part, I think, for a period of time, but I don't think that made it the completed. And then our, there was one more, one other comment, just to confirm that the, the services had, had looked at it for a few years.
Questions?
All right, so the rest of the board wasn't privy to. We did receive a memo from our hydrogeologist today. Nobody has had a chance to look at it yet. It's just been forwarded to the applicant. It's kind of, um, the linchpin for this application as far as neg deck or positive deck, because if it is determined based on how the two hydrogeologists work out, that they, it is potentially charged, recharging the aquifer, then it becomes a positive deck and we have to go down that road. If the two hydrogeologists work out that it's not, then it could potentially be a neg deck if this board agrees. So it's really up to this board how you guys wanna move this forward. We typically don't start acting on stuff until we have all the information.
I do, we should have all the information.
In front of us, especially being this, this could go in either direction based on what the two hydrogeologists come up with. So, what do you wanna do? You wanna wait until...
All the information.
Okay. All right.
I do have some additional comments on the E A F. Would it be okay if I sent them to the applicant?
Yes, go ahead. And then Natalie, I know with the slope cut, the net lot buildable area, if you guys wanna have a call. Right? Because you requested to have a call offline for that?
Oh, um, no, more just authorizing the hydrogeologist to discuss the recharging issue. And then I think, um, at the next meeting, depending on that answer, if it is recharging, the board would have to consider whether or not they can, would want that area deducted, the riparian zone, as land unsuitable for development. And then, just so the board understa- like, that would be the first, that would set the precedent for these applications subject to riparian zone moving forward and net lot area deductions.
Okay. Yep.
If I could suggest the sunny side of the street, if the consultant discusses and is pretty sure what the answer is, it's not recharging, do we seek forward?
This board doesn't typically act when it doesn't have the information in front of it. No, I don't. The information was received today. And you're on the agenda for today, so we're not gonna go into this, the building, so, no. I don't have the reports back from both hydrogeologists, so I'm not gonna move forward. You heard the board.
But could you make a motion to allow the consultants to discuss? Thank you.
So I will offer a motion for the hydrogeologists to talk amongst each other at the second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else with Highland? Next item, Rushmore Estates. Review and discuss revised documents submitted for amended site plan, special permit for proposed event venue. Said property is located at fourteen Castleton Road in Highland Mills, is known as the village of Woodbury, tax map, section two, oh, two, block one, lot seventy.
I'm tempted to say it's me again, but I won't. George Lithgow, uh, project attorney. With me is Larry Tarrell, civil tech, project engineer. Again, uh, it's the engineer that has the meat of the discussion tonight. We're looking to move forward. And we are also, this project is also under a constraint. We have a consent order with the village. We do want to explore with the village possibly of bridging the time between the two thousand and three consent order and the time that the board is able to take action so that the marketing activities can continue for Rushmore. We are also going to explore obtaining an exemption from the moratorium because, again, this is an existing project. It has been in operation for two years. It, uh, uses water on a somewhat atypical basis. Essentially, to refresh the board's memory, uh, recollection a little bit, this is a project which is an existing structure. It is classified under the, uh, property code as a mansion. And it has, I think, thirteen bedrooms in it. Five of them are used for bed and breakfast. One of the things that's notable about this is the bed and breakfast actually is functioning as an accessory to the proposed event venue because people who come for a wedding, which is the typical event, will stay overnight and, uh, be there, make sure that they're on time for the wedding. So there's a lot of unusual aspects of this. We have, uh, memos from your traffic and your, uh, engineer regarding it. I think it's best if Larry takes over and addresses the issues and concerns that were raised.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Larry Tarrell, civil tech engineering. So just going through the comments, just a couple I'd like to touch on and maybe get some clarification on, uh, if possible. I guess, one, starting with the existing onsite septic system. Uh, it's been, it's been in operation and working with no problems. It's been cleaned out and pumped, et cetera, and there was an inspection done. However, I guess you're looking for a potential dye test on that system. What I would ask then is what, what type of loading rate per person? I know you referenced the D E C, ten gallons per day per person. However, I'd like to see, not for any other reason, that's for banquets, where we are solely, any food, it's brought in and taken out. There's no cleanup, no cooking, no prep done on-site when it comes to the food. So I don't think it really relates as a banquet hall in that regard. So, and that's why when, in my original re, uh, letter to the board and itself, I had put in about three to five gallons per day per person. Because you're talking about a four or five-hour event where there's only two bathrooms being utilized. So, uh, we, we can't conduct this dye test that you're requesting. I would just ask for what kind of parameters, if it's still the ten gallons, and so be it, but I'm looking for some, uh...
Yeah, I don't really recall that submission from, like, I have to look back and see what you originally submitted with the three to five gallons and the basis for that. I think what seemed clear to me when I was looking at the D E C regs is that the banquet hall was the closest thing to an event venue essentially for this purpose. So I'd have to kinda look at that again and advise the board. I think it would be appropriate if you could demonstrate the ten gallons per day, per person, for ninety-nine occupants, basically saying, I think originally it was said that above ninety-nine sewer facilities or restrooms, portable restrooms would be brought in. And at the last meeting, I know you weren't here, um, the board just tried to convey that really we're looking for a demonstration of the worst-case scenario, that everything could function as appropriate. So that was in, in my mind, ninety-nine people, ten gallons per day, that would be the worst-case scenario type of thing.
So basically, you're looking for a thousand gallons over a four to five-hour period?
If that's what it is, yeah.
Obviously, as far as the water usage had come up, they are on city with the village water. But we will adj- address the, or adjust, I should say, the amount utilized.
The form, right.
Form.
Yep.
Another item that had come up was regarding, I guess, the lighting, existing lighting. Uh, I think, and it was also commented that we have, we are pretty much surrounded by forested area. And I think we're buffered enough that the lighting does not impact neighbors as far as the lighting itself goes and has come up. There's existing light poles, uh, along the driveway itself that have probably been there twenty-plus years. And they were all, that was all part of, I guess, when it came before the board with, for the bed and breakfast application, that was all existing. As far as around the venue itself, we didn't show any of the, on the buildings, but we can't show whatever building mounted lights there are in order to, you know, further evaluate it.
Yeah, I think the board typically likes to see what's existing and what's proposed. If you're saying that there's nothing proposed, then the plan should just show what's existing.
Existing.
I think it also came up as one of the county comments to, uh, county planning that that should be provided, so.
Yeah.
That would be, uh, in my opinion, like, a complete application with that information.
I say, the, so what, what it would be missing, what else is just whatever's building mounted at this point? The, uh, existing lanterns, they like say, lamp poles along the driveway itself have been there for quite some time. And I don't believe there's been any comments from neighbors or any complaints put into the building department. I guess the, the last item is on the traffic itself. There were some comments from the county and I guess the traffic consultant. What was being referenced was, I guess about three years ago now, the applicant came before the board for a, uh, a winery use. And at that point, it was thought we were gonna use Ice House Road to come into the winery itself. And that's where the improvements out on Route thirty-two came about and the involvement of D O T. I mean, it's totally off the table at this point. It has nothing to do with this application.
But doesn't the narrative state that Ice House Road is one of the entrance ways?
Yeah, that, I think the big thing for the event venue is that two means of egress adequate for emergency service vehicles need to be proven essentially under the code. And right now, um, there are three points of access proposed, and really, I'm probably stepping on Rich's toes right now, but... So one is the, it's like the pavers, I think, to the rear of the building where temporary facilities may be. And then the other two kinda actually intersect, uh, one coming from Ice House, and then the other is the main gated drive, or no, I'm sorry, that one is not gated, the main drive essentially to the state. So I thi-
For emergency services, I, I looked at it again this afternoon. I can't say that Ice House Road could be utilized for emergency, because if they came in there in order to access the site, the, the fire truck isn't gonna, you know, the fire truck go up at that type of rate. It's not a, a formal road connecting it into the estate, which is the borders. But it still does sound the two that you are talking about. So, and you had asked, uh, before goes emergency services, that we provide lengths and widths of those drives so that they can evaluate, uh, you know, access.
Right.
Which I guess leads to my next question, is once we provide that information on the plan, and obviously submitted to the board, do we approach emergency services or the board?
We take care of that.
You do?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the board can authorize that tonight if they choose, um, you know, contingent on that information received. That'd be referred to the E S Os for comment.
So there's an operation narrative that was submitted on July thirty-first. So the site has four means of egress ingress, making all parts of the property easily accessible to emergency services vehicles. So that statement may need to be revised then based on what you're speaking to now.
Yes. Especially, as I say, off of Ice House, they would not be able to get on-site near the, to the venue with a fire truck.
Yeah, I remember there was a lot of talk about what needed to be done with Ice House Road when you guys were here for the winery. I know it wasn't just a simple, it wasn't just simple fix to, to make it a usable road.
No, and again, the, the intent on this one was if they came in off of, not off of.
Okay. But again, well, once we get that stuff from you, we give it to E S Os, they'll come back and they'll let us know if they have any comments or problems with it or suggestions or anything like that. I, I don't see why we can't send it over to them.
The E S O.
Yeah. Just keep in mind, the building department's closed this week, so they're moving. They won't reopen to the sixth. There's a box here now for you to drop stuff off, but as of Monday, they're back. They're over on the other side now by the water department. Sorry, I cut you off, Larry. Sorry, I cut you off, Larry. I think, I need, I, I know we got a few more things to talk about, but I think right now with this application, we have a lot of repeated comments that have come back on the memos. So I think really to help move this forward and get this to its next stage, those are the items we need to get buttoned up, so that we have a complete package where we can then set a public hearing if, you know, and things along that line. So I don't know if you want to, do you have the memos, or are we not sending them to the right people? I want to make sure you're getting them.
No, I have, I have been getting them.
Okay. Sorry Natalie, I cut you off too.
That's okay. Should I, do you have any other things that you wanted to ask Larry, just to help facilitate that, or?
I think we've pretty much touched on the ones that he wants some clarification.
Okay. Yeah, for, just for the board's information, we also asked the applicant to, or advise whether or not there was going to be any improvements to the parking areas that are shown on the plan, you know, if they're going to be resurfaced or striped or things like that. If parking improvements are proposed, then we'll have comments on drainage and stormwater. The applicant's showing one dumpster at the end of the valley parking area. We just wanted confirmation that that's sufficient for their maximum event. Also, previously, there was, or the event management plan, we had some comments on that, so we're really revising that narrative to include all of the requirements of the code, including hours of operation, security and law enforcement, just to touch on those so that, again, you can just deem it, you know, you've reviewed it, it's complete.
Right.
It meets the code requirements. And then the only other thing is that you have received comments from the county planning department, the applicant responded to those comments, and those comments, or the applicant's response was referred back to the county, but I don't think you've heard back from the county. So, it's with the county.
Yeah.
All right, that just sums it up. And otherwise, you know, I agree that just on the applicant's next submission, we'll review them for response to our comments.
And, I mean, Larry, make sure we, there is a small ARB section to this as well, because you do have the proposal for tents there. So I know, we don't need to approve every tent, but the code does require us to review the general style, color, and layout of what the tents are going to be.
So I guess if he has some photos from previous events, he could submit those, but he?
If that's what he's going to use going, if that's what he's going to use generally going forward, I don't know if he has a standard tent that he rents for the site.
That's right.
But if he does, then yeah, that's what the board will be looking for. And then we'll-
Those have two suppliers, they were supposed to be providing with typicals, so once again, so sort of.
If we can get those in, and then what, if it is other color than white, I would imagine he probably just uses a white tent. I don't know if he's going to use like a pink or a purple tent. I know it's funny, but I'm asking, because I just, I want to, like, you guys, I want to kind of start bundling this up and pushing this board, so.
I suspect white, I don't think I've ever seen any of the code, to be honest with you, but we will clarify that.
Just asking, you know, if it's ivory, it's ivory, you know, but, you know, but if it's going to be like purple and white, let's, let's find that out.
Suggestion, don't make it purple.
You left us such an honor, Steve. You've asked for the worst case, and if the worst case is, we're not sure. But what we're going to basically say to you is, we're going to start when the events are started, within that timeframe, and then within that timeframe.
Okay.
So, you know, we can't, we can't tell you until I have court. We're going to have one goes from 11th to 13th.
No, but it would be, it would be gen, whoops, thank God, I closed that, that would have sucked. But general hours, you know, I would imagine you're not planning on hosting parties until 3:00 in the morning.
No, that's outside your code.
Right.
So that's basically what we can tell. We're going to work with those timeframes, they're not going to be entirely different from start of the timeframe to end of the timeframe. But they'll be within that, the finance will be, both of these are options.
And that's perfectly fine, and that's, and that's what we're looking, that's what the board is looking for. We just need to have all that information to kind of move forward.
Do you need to include the number of events because we don't, we're going to give them before?
I don't think, and it does any, I don't think it's anything to do with number, I think we're just looking for maximum people.
There is a number in the, that is supposed to be.
I think that's the village, though, is your.
I think that maybe.
I don't, is there anything in the code, just number of events?
Regarding the number of events?
I know there's a lot there, that number doesn't ring my bell.
See, there's-
I know there's hours, things around sound, like sound amplification, if you're going to, like, again, worst case scenarios, bands, live DJs.
Have you ever done, left, so many men?
I, is, and it's totally possible I'm missing an entry. The last narrative I have is from July, was there one in between July and now?
No.
Because it has parking, bathrooms, food and alcohol consumption, physical setup, and then the last line is the four setup, the four egress-ingress routes.
According to the rest of the persistent comments.
I will go back and look.
Oh, so the application should say the maximum number of events to be held on an annual basis, so.
365, you're holding an event every day?
They, they should be looking at their, we, this is where we called it the worst case, but for them is the best case scenario. So they should be saying, yeah, if they could possibly have one every day, or they could be considering every weekend or something like that.
Okay.
So they should be providing that to you and say, this is the maximum number of events that we're expected to hold.
We'll give you a best where it should go.
Okay.
Okay, for a, like, say.
So 363, right? Hey, God bless him if he can do that.
So as a practical man, you can't have two weddings on a big concert.
Nah.
Of course you can.
I'm sure if he tried really hard, but I don't think that would-
One in the morning, one in the evening.
If he tries, he can.
So as far as Larry, as far as Natalie comments concerned, you're okay with what you, what we're looking for, and what we're looking for from, from the board as far as Natalie? We'll go to Rich in a second. Because like I said, the board wants to move this forward, but just, we, we need to move together as a, as a bundle and not piecemeal.
Fair enough.
So Rich?
So, we did a couple things. First, from the partner narrative, they mentioned that they, they made it clear to clients and guests around that they're supposed to take to get in here. We just want to see that spelled out in, in there, a little bit, so we can, everybody's hearing that. I had some questions about, you know, are you getting deliveries, garbage, emergency vehicles, buses, like you say, come, with that, come here and be, well, I see, you know, I see there's drop off areas, but likely in here, like, how does a bus circulate, or what other large vehicles might have, where they're going to, how they circulate in here? Have that specified? Maybe you can see some, let's turn the diagram, just like, assuming the ESO, like, can develop. I think Natalie sort of touched on this, but if the partner narrative aren't going to be paid with agents of those, maybe they get a concern over time, over time, so that maybe some of them will be looked at. And I think you kind of touched on the access out of Route 32, but I think obviously it plays out the customer road is not being utilized, is less of a concern. That's part of the, the first comment I had, you know, just kind of specifying what the approach route is to get in here.
Again, I'm sorry. I guess, just going back to one comment, as far as accessing the site, we just, obviously no one's coming into Ice House Road, so it's really just a brigadune and castle.
Right, I think we just want to have that spelled out.
Spelled out, okay, fine.
Any other questions for Natalie or for Rich?
Or the other Rich?
Kelly, you have any to add?
No.
No, covered, we covered it all?
I think you covered it all. Once we get that in, then we can talk about next steps.
Yeah. But I will offer a motion to allow Natalie to refer the plans to ES, for ESO circulation. Second, any questions? All in favor? All right. So the sooner you can get those in, at least the turning movements and stuff like that, the whist and stuff like that, then Natalie can circulate those to fire, EMS, and police, we can get their comments back as well.
Okay.
I don't think police and EMS will have much, it's really, fire trucks, got the biggest trucks out of all of them. Do you have any questions for us?
That's it for now, thank you.
George, good?
Mr. Polo, would you answer for the other question?
Understand. And I, I know you have to go back in front of the village board, but that's out of our hands as far as what they want to do, but as long as you guys keep submitting the stuff, then we're working in good faith forward. That's what, that's all we're looking for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You, good night?
All right. And they also want to hang out? Oh, wait, I did forget something.
We got a law we got to talk about.
I know Kelly worked so hard on it till. Local law number 18, review and discuss referral from the village board of introductory local law 18 of 2023, entitled, "A Local Law Amending the Continuing the Moratorium on Certain Non-Residential Permits, Certificates of Occupancies, and Approvals."
I spend a long time coming up with these titles, just ask Andrew.
Did you forget anything?
I don't think so, I think I got it.
Okay, good. All right. So, Kelly?
So, I will give a brief summary. So this is a local law that extends the moratorium that is currently pen, ooh, that's currently pending before the, the board of trustees. They were interested in now that they're developing the wells and they're moving forward to get additional water sources, allowing residential to move forward, but we did receive Natalie's comments, so they are considering whether or not that includes mixed, mixed-
Mixed use.
Mixed uses, thank you, townhomes, multifamilies, whether it includes things like that. And also, the two private water entities was a very good catch, because Natalie and I have had many conversations about that, because there are some private water districts around, so to include those as well. But that's pretty much the, the goal of the village board at this time, that they're considering, so that's why it got referred to you guys.
Questions for Natalie?
I'm Kelly.
Or Kelly.
Well, I don't-
Oh my God, I got concerned an engineer!
Woo-hoo! And now we're going to go to our new lawyer, Natalie Barber.
Actually, I think Kelly summarized it really well. I mean, those were only two comments about private, private water districts and whether or not those other uses should be included in the exemption, so unless the board has any questions, that's it.
No, I don't have any questions or additional comments.
We'll authorize, Natalie, no, we got to let, authorize Natalie, sorry, Kelly, to send Natalie's memo to the village board as our comments.
Okay.
That's a second?
That's a second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, with no further, this is in front of the board, I'll offer a motion to close.
I have a second and third.
And fourth. Any, all in favor? Aye.